For Wednesday, February 7, 20.4. Meeting has been properly closed. We will call it, please.
Yes, Dr. Cahn. This is Supersky. Here, this is Yank. Here, Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Dr. Beer.
Here.
And this is Lucas.
Great, thank you. And we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. The pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic for which this stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. I would move that we approve it, except that we switch items nine being ninth. My motion has been made seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Both motion carries. Thank you. Friends of Franklin recognition. ATI forged products. Doug Denrich is the director of capital planning and energy. And he will be accepting the recognition on behalf of ATI forged products. Recognized by Noel Isawak, who is also here at Franklin High School, a faculty teacher. Please come forward. I know that Noel has some things to say.
I do.
And we have Doug too.
Well, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity tonight to speak and to recognize the efforts that ATI forged product, sorry, has made really over the last four years. We've had an incredible partnership that's really been evolving. Some of the things that really stood out to me were just ATI's willingness to think outside the box and collaborate with FHS staff to come up with unique solutions to really meet both of our needs. It really started with Saber Manufacturing. Students have to apply for a job at our student-run business. And I don't want to do those interviews. I'm their teacher. They know me. ATI staff have conducted those interviews for the last four years. So it gives students an authentic experience. They have to, you know, wear nice attire. They have to prepare. They need to know a little bit about the company and answer some real questions and, you know, prove that they should get that job. They're very nervous, but that's what's great. Then when they graduate or go on to, you know, an interview for another job, they have some experience under their belt. We were talking a lot about how could we develop this relationship more? And the most wonderful thing happened. I said, wouldn't it be just so great if you could order some parts from the kids? Could they make something for you? Knowing that I'm talking to an aerospace company that sends things, you know, up into outer space. But they really got creative and found some parts that they use internally that students could make for them on our machine. It was a large order, so I know that it sounded like it might be boring because we're making a lot of the same parts. But what that did for my students was it allowed them to have repetition, to build their confidence on a machine that can be very intimidating. And that was just incredible. They had to make sure that they met ATI's quality standards. They had to work together, develop a quality process, so that they could really say, yes, we're confident that these parts are good. They had to do everything, figure out material, tooling, cooling issues, customer support. But the biggest thing that they had to do was they had to solve problems and work together because they knew it mattered. They knew it wasn't just an assignment that I gave them. They wanted to satisfy their customer. What ATI did was they came in and presented to the students and said, here's this part that we need, and it's important. Let us tell you why. Here's what it does. It's not necessarily going to the moon, but it's sure related to that. And if they don't have that, they can't do all the other things that they want to do. It instilled a sense of pride in the students that you just can't replicate that. It was really incredible. At the end of the year last year, the students gave ATI a formal presentation. They spent their time coming in, listening to the lessons learned, the growth that the students experienced, gave them feedback on their presentation. And then this year, they gave us a repeat order, which was very unexpected, but amazing. That resulted in some really great leadership opportunities. The students that came back as seniors who worked on the project last year were able to train the younger students how to run the parts, how to do quality inspections. The younger students in my intro classes see the machine running and they say, wow, what is that? That's so cool. You know, is what I'm learning in class related to that? Yes, it absolutely is. And then this year, we toured ATI. So Saber Manufacturing got, I'm telling you, the red carpet was rolled out for these kids. We got a behind-the-scenes tour. So many amazing staff members were there to share their stories. The different personalities that the kids could really connect with, lots of different trades, just an opportunity to learn more about some amazing career opportunities that are really right here in our neighborhood. It was transformative, and it really, I saw it as an investment in Franklin students like no other. So Doug, thank you so much. I know you've been really working hard to make this happen, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. So on behalf of ATI forged products and our whole team, there's a lot of effort. It wasn't just me. There was a whole team behind it. And we probably caused Noel some headaches or nightmares over the time. We broke her machine a few times, right? Some tumbling issues. But really, it was given back, right? Our company giving back to the community. These students that came on the tour, so respectful of our people, our building, our process. It was really great to see that because I think that's what this school really instills and Noel's class instills in these students. And I think you'll see it throughout your school district is these kids, they want to learn, but they want to see what else is out there. And if they know what's out there, maybe they have direction, right? To get them exposed to manufacturing, I think a lot of these kids, we kind of took them on a nice tour, but we had one of our biggest pieces of equipment run that day. And it's kind of intimidating. I was telling Mike this, but we can share that video with the school board. It's intimidating, but it's amazing for these kids to see because what I like to show people is there's never a dull moment. You go into any job, and it can always change, which is great. So really appreciate the partnership with Franklin School District and really looking forward to additional projects. I think when I see an opportunity, I reach out to Noel. And I think your team is making, or the Woods team is making some frames for us, picture frames in the woodshop. So there's always an opportunity to partner. And then what's next? Is there youth apprenticeship program, which I know we don't really dabble in, but it's more on the college side. But what can we do with these high school students in the future? Because these are our employees. And if you watch the news at all, I think we have a few commercials out there looking for employees just like everybody else. So I think we're all fighting for the same talent, but we'd be more than welcome to have your talent come work for us. So really appreciate it. And that's really all I had to say. I don't know if there's any questions about, you know, what we did together, working together. But it was really a pleasure working with the students. And that's what this is all about. That's what you're all here for, right? Is for the students. So really appreciate it.
Thanks. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but it's such a source of pride for our district to have these opportunities for these kids. So thank you, Mrs. Bennen. Thank you, Ms. Isawak. Thank you, Mr. Volo, who's back there. Mr. Compton, who coordinates these efforts. Thanks to everyone for helping the kids get these opportunities. We can't really do it, we can't do it at all without the community. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I think we want to take some pictures.
Yeah, that'd be great if we could. And when you have your cup of coffee tomorrow, if you can think of us.
To watch the quality. So it's been just really, really neat to see that process. And then to look through the pictures of the visit when they came out by you was really, like they were engaged in talking to kids afterwards too. So thank you for everything you do at NATI in general, but it's been really nice. And Noel, thanks for like keeping that door open to connections all the time.
And send that video.
Thank you.
Yeah. I want to see that machine.
I'll send it to Darlene, and she can send it out.
Perfect. Okay. Perfect.
All right, community comment. Nobody has signed up. So unless anybody wants to speak, I will not, I won't go through that long process. Consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Supersky.
Yes. That's my name.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. I didn't know if it was Mary or you. School board calendar. There are three community listening sessions this month. One, February 15th at the ECC at 8:30. One, Tuesday, February 20th at the ECC at 6:00 PM. And one, Thursday, February 22nd at Franklin City Hall at the Senior Dining at 10:30 AM. There is a Board of Education meeting, February 21st at the ECC at 6:00. A school board workshop, Wednesday, February 28th at 6:00 at the ECC. And another Board of Education meeting on March 6th, also at 6:00 PM at the ECC. District Administrator update, Mrs. Bennen, please.
All right. So good evening. We have a number of athletic recognitions to kind of call out, being the end of the season for a lot of our winter sports, not all of them, but moving in. So FHS Wrestling, our high school wrestling team, wrapped up their season. They won the SEC Conference this year. And all 14 wrestlers earned some kind of all-conference award, whether that's first, second, or third team. So quite an accomplishment for the team and the coaches all the way through because we know that doesn't just happen in the high school years. That happens throughout the whole program. So they continue on to regionals this Saturday. Last weekend, our varsity dance team were state champions in Division One Palm and Division One Jazz. And they have a variety of videos on their Instagram account, which is at Franklin Palms. You can tell Chad added that part for me. You got the social media in there. Franklin Saber's Boys Swim Team, they have a three-peat of SEC Championship. Our FHS Jazz Ensemble traveled to the New Trier High School, participated in the 41st Frank Montooth Jazz Festival this past weekend. And also our High School Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA. They were in a competition at Kenosha Bradford this past weekend, and they finished fourth out of 18 schools. That's higher than they finished the last several years. So they're very excited about their accomplishments. And 28 of the 35 students on that team also made it to the state competition, which will take place in April. So a lot of excitement. I'm sure there's things I've missed that are going on in the district, but those are a few things that stood out. And then as President Sprague said, we are working on our community engagement sessions around our Franklin Forward work. And every now and then, I will look through prior documents of what updates the district administrator did at board meetings. And it was kind of fun when I pulled up February of 2022, Judy Miller was sitting in this seat at that time, and she opened the meeting with, "Tonight, you'll be hearing about the condition of our facilities and the needs we have. As you hear what our needs are, I would like to point out that without our great custodial team, under the leadership at that time of Mr. Strumville, our needs would be much greater. We have an amazing crew of custodians. I know we have Mr. Daniels with us tonight, who's our new B&amp;G director." Well, he's a year in now, so he's no longer new. And our great team, but it was just, it's neat for us as a community to always see that it's a continuation of the work that's going on. And it's such a privilege to have a community and a board that's so supportive. So like Mike stated, we are working to roll out that Franklin Forward plan to get feedback from our community, to engage the community around potential work in our future. And those dates are posted, and they're open to anybody in the community. So we hope to have a great turnout. They are going to be in this space since people are most familiar with it, and some of those sessions are during school. So this is the best space to do that. So we hope to see you many there. Thank you.
Thank you. Academic and Technical Excellence Scholarship recipient approvals. Mr. Volo, please.
There's a lot of table here.
Shift at various points.
It's a test. Where do I sit? One of the best things I get to do every year is come and share with you the students who we will designate as nominees for recipients of the Technical and Academic Excellence Scholarships. The number of scholarships we have is four. That's based on our student population. The next level up is when you cross 2,000 students, so not something we have to worry about. And I will remind you that the scholarship value has been the same for about 30 years, has not changed. So in terms of your legislative advocacy, I don't think it paid for college then, and it doesn't pay for college now. But again, the students do amazing work. And in the coming days, we'll also be able to shout out those students in terms of recognizing them through newsletters, on social media, those sorts of things. Because these are students who academically and, you know, fields across our high school did amazing work. So I humbly ask that you approve those nominees as indicated and shared on the, you know, additional piece of information I gave you today. Remember that these students can use these in the state of Wisconsin, in a public or private for academic excellence or technical school. The tech excellence can only be used at the technical college system in the state. However, if those students don't select it or they go out of state, we then keep going down the list until we get to a student who does use it. I don't have information. It comes back to me through clearinghouse or other things. It tells me the number of students who persist through it, not specifically for the academic or tech excellence scholarship. So we don't track those students individually in terms of their thing. Sometimes you'd ask, who uses it these all four years? I hope so.
I move that we accept the student recipients as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Yank. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, state convention reports.
We're even a small one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Athletics and Activities Report. Mr. Smith, please.
Welcome.
All right. First off, just want to say thank you. This is my first time addressing the board in this position. So gotten to know some of you, worked with some of you, just very grateful and happy to be in Franklin, at Franklin, at the high school. I got to attend the National Athletic Directors Conference a few months ago. And being around 3,000 of your peers from all over the United States, I think, was eye-opening for me. And it was weird being the one in the room who felt all the support in the world back home. I have a great principal, a great admin team, a great board, great kids, and I'm truly grateful for that. So thank you for that opportunity. Also want to recognize before I give an Athletics and Activities Board of Education report that today is National Women in Sports Day. So an ode to all of our female coaches, teachers, and athletes. It's an important day. Lastly, also, Mock Trials also headed to state. So just so you're aware of that one, well, that's another club headed to state. With the report, I will not read verbatim for you tonight. I'm going to hit some high levels on all of it. Obviously, I can answer any questions once I roll through the whole thing. But I will get going and hit on some high levels for myself and some of the things both from last year and going into this year as well. We have 31 programs total on the athletic side. We now have 30 clubs as of last week. We just brought in a new one. So that's a really exciting and awesome opportunity, I think, to, as we talk about innovation within the district, where our kids are constantly finding ways to be involved, which I find every day, I'm just shocked by how many different things they can come up with. The new one is the Investment Club. So they want to learn how to trade in the stock market. Not sure if that's good or bad, but it's an awesome and curious thing. But pertaining to last year, just athletically and competitively, upped our game to 187 conference championships from 179. 19 state and team runner-up championships and 37 state team championships, which now we can add 38 to that. Technically, 38 and 39 because the dance team won twice, but we'll call it 38. I also want to shout out some of our clubs and activities that did some awesome things. Our Visual Arts Team went to state. They said they got gypped. They should have won, but they came in second, so it's all good. Saber Robotics had their biggest class yet last year, so they now have the biggest team they've ever had, which if you ever get a chance to check out that program, come at like 7 o'clock at night, and there's just like robots all throughout the school. Really an awesome, awesome club. Second to that, Yearbook Club. They got gold level certification from Jostens, which for them was a huge deal. It's social media engagement. There's a ton of criteria that it takes to get that. So our kids are thriving on the club side as well. So I just wanted to point all that out. Getting into more on the athletic side of things, looking at some of the numbers, we continue to see the same trend that we have seen over and over again as it pertains to grade point average and scholarship and how that correlates to activity participation. As you can see with the GPAs laid out, that correlation is still stronger than ever. And I think the more I see it, the more I'm actually in the chair and viewing why. It's because kids feel like they're part of something. I think coaches, being a coach or an advisor to a club or whatever the case may be, they feel a sense of belonging also to empower these kids. All of our kids feel like there is something that they belong to. And my constant goal and mission is how to figure out, the kids that walk around the school not doing anything, how do I get them in something? How do I spark their brain? How do I make that happen? And that's something as an admin team, we're constantly trying to figure out. Short of, you know, if a kid gets in a fight in school, I just want to put him on the wrestling team. I think that's kind of where we're headed if that ever occurs. But I think for me, constantly seeing the involvement academically, how that correlates to what they're doing on the field and their club, it's spread throughout. Same thing goes for participation at school and attendance at school. When kids, again, feel like they're part of something and they're part of a team or they're part of something that's bigger than themselves, they are more likely to attend. And that's what the data is showing us. So I continue to hit on that because I think we have to continue to find ways to, not only just from a numbers perspective, like the number of clubs, number of teams, number of offerings, but also just the space we have to give them to do all these different things. And that's why sometimes it can get a little tough with some of the ideas of clubs. Pickleball Club is one that started this year, but Pickleball Club has to go off campus, about half a mile down the road. But first year as a club, they have 55 kids, which is, I mean, I've seen a lot of clubs, usually 55 kids, that's a big club for a season program, let alone first year. And fully expect that to probably be a varsity sport in the next five to 10 years. And that's a, that is nationwide. Our composition of male to female student athletes is pretty similar to what the composition of the school is. So I feel really good about that, that the composition is the same in that regard. Yeah. Title IX compliance. I think the biggest thing with Title IX is just continuing to, for one, obviously understanding how big Title IX is. That's a huge thing. There's a lot of things under Title IX. But the things that are directly related to athletics and activities is just ensuring that we are staying up to date with Title IX. Title IX is a constantly changing thing. I think, again, that's a facility thing. That's one that often goes unlooked from a, sometimes it's from an ADA perspective, and just making sure all of our venues are accessible for everybody. Obviously, looking at participation and making sure that teams and coaches and how coaches are trained and paid, all of that is equal, so that everybody has the same accessibility to all the clubs and activities that we're offering. So that's the biggest thing with that. Cut sports and non-cut sports, I think that one is, I want to give a little context to that one. That one's hard because I, in my heart of hearts, I don't ever want there to be a cut sport. But thankfully, I think that's also part of what clubs and activities bring kids, is a sense of accountability and hard work kind of gets you on the team or you might get cut. But we do run into a lot of situations where we are cutting and have to be cut sports simply because of, again, the size of the space that the kids are in. We don't have enough room to keep this many kids. Soccer last year had almost 100 kids come out for the soccer team. That's more of a staffing thing. Like we just, we don't have, we don't have enough coaches for 100 kids to pay them all. But I think the biggest thing when it comes to cut and non-cut sports, when we have opportunities to get kids involved, and I've seen personal anecdotes of it of kids around the school who need the structure, they need the camaraderie, they need the friendship, they need all the things that sports or a club can bring. If they don't make the team, that all of a sudden, it's like, where do they go then? And I have a hard time, you know, with that. But that all comes with, over time, again, creating that space and that opportunity for them. Because if it's not a sport that they can be involved in, I would love to have intramurals so kids still feel like they're part of something. So there's still something for them to go and do. One of the, I think, challenges within any high school athletics, not necessarily just Franklin, but just across the country, is the conversation just around non-school sports, specifically clubs. You can imagine in a, you know, swimming, you see it a lot. You see it a lot with soccer. You see it in volleyball, particularly girls volleyball. We will continue to see athletes and students pulled away from our school because they want to, you know, have a, you know, a quote-unquote next-level experience, you know, at the high school level. But again, I think that is all part of our duty and responsibility to give them the best experience from a high school perspective, so they don't feel like they have to go outside to a club to get that experience. But that, again, that's not necessarily a Franklin challenge. That's a challenge in high school in general. But the challenge for us and the thing we can control is what is the experience we're giving them? So they don't feel like that club is a better option for them. So they don't feel like that gym is better than the gym we got right here at school. So that kind of rolls into FIED and PE. That is a department and classes that continue to grow. We are continuing each year, and Mr. Volo could speak on it even better than me, but just speaking to a bunch of the PE teachers who are also coaches, we can't fit kids in the gym class anymore. I think we've gotten creative and innovative with different classes. I think our officiating class, which is another awesome one, that we have official shortage in the United States. That is just a fact. We're losing officials day by day. So getting young kids and young people involved in that officiating class to show them they can go make an extra 200 bucks, 300 bucks just by officiating in high school, I think is a really cool thing. But again, that's a way of being innovative that maybe came from just a lack of ability to add more to a particular gym class. But it's still silver lining to the situation. So but PE is one that continues to, again, from a facility standpoint, when you think about it, when you sit in my chair, our basketball team, you know, on a given day that they have a game, they're playing on the same court and the same hoops that six PE classes that played on. Just yesterday, our rim came a little loose before our boys' basketball game because a kid in gym class wasn't, shot a basket, and the rim started to get a little creaky, so it happens. But as you continue to pack more inside of one space, and I, you get where I'm going, not going to further that. But I think going in then to the middle school, what I think an opportunity for us as a district and for our kids, is we talk about their transition from elementary to middle to high. Looking across the street, they have a beautiful middle school with a beautiful gym. We have, I mean, it's over 1,000 kids at that school. That's almost a Division One high school. You know what I mean? That's a Division Two high school. And I think we, middle school athletics used to be looked at as kind of supervision, something for kids to do, throw them in there after school, mom and dad get a couple of extra hours, you know? Like, it wasn't much speciality around it, I don't think. But where it is today, and looking at Forest Park, looking at how many kids are participating, we are constantly getting requests of, is there boys volleyball? Is there, you know, whatever the case, we've gotten a million different requests, and it's constantly between me and Chris at the middle school. It's a staffing thing, but it is also, again, we don't have representation at a high school level to be able to do both. So again, I think that's an opportunity, is looking at Forest Park, not just as, it's not just middle school. it's not just middle school athletics anymore. It's, it's its own entity, has its own brand, if you will. And, again, it's a big, it's a big middle school. So I think it's just a tremendous opportunity. But working with Chris over there, it's, it's an awesome opportunity to continue to bring the eighth graders up to the school. We just had the eighth graders up, like, last week, come check out freshman preview night. I don't know how many people were there, but it was a lot. I walked in the commons and there was nowhere to walk, so talked to a lot of parents, and it was a lot of the same conversation, you know, we'd like to, my kid was never able to play this in middle school, so when are you going to work on this for the middle school? And I told him I'd get right on it. I think procedures for initiating a new activity has gone really well, that's something that Jordan Hine kind of put in a couple of years ago, and that's been really helpful for new clubs and activities, to start to think about, when I want to start a new club, why am I starting this new club? Who does it impact? Who can I bring with me? I think that's a critical part of any team or function, is giving these kids the leadership skills to walk through an application, to find an advisor in the school that'll, you know, sign on with them and, and go through this club with them. So I just wanted to mention that because you can imagine I get a lot of requests to start clubs, and that conversation starts with, Mr. Smith, here's my purpose and here's why. And that's really cool to see a kid articulate that. Continuing to find ways, from a coaching standpoint, I, to me, like, when I worked at the college level, your, your recruiting is kind of your bloodline for college teams, right? For the high school level, I think it's coaches. I mean, you could, it's probably kids as well, but really the coaches who are around our kids, two, three, four, five hours a day sometimes, they become confidants of kids, they become the closest thing they have. Some people don't have the greatest home life, they rely on their coach. Some kids don't want to go home because they want to just hang out with their coach. So continuing to find ways to not only recruit coaches who believe in what, what Franklin is about, not only that, but, but keeping them. When they're here, we want them to feel like they are getting development as coaches. We want them to feel like they're respected as coaches, that they're a part of this team, even if they're not in the building. That'll be a forever challenge for anybody, is just having coaches that are not in the building working here. But that's okay. But I, I want to continue to find innovative ways to make coaches feel like they're part of something, not just as coaches, but they're part of the Franklin community. And I think that trickles down to our kids, because that's who our kids spend a, a lot of time with in that space. Collegiate athletic commitments, oh, student scholarship data, so we are still giving out the, the Ted Nussner Scholarship. Each year is a thousand dollar scholarship for a, a male and a female athlete, and we're already getting our candidates for those. We, we got one in fall, actually, we got, we started getting those letters in. So that would be another awesome tradition to continue. And then moving into kind of collegiate athletic commitments, we actually had signing day today, it's one of the national signing days, had, we're supposed to have 10, we had nine kids committed, signed letters of intent, we had probably 100, 100 people in our comments cheering them on. But I continue to think of how, we talked about college and career readiness, and I don't, I don't think that there's a more, I guess, apropos way to show that, is get kids getting a scholarship to go play in college. I think hearing from parents, hearing from just members in our community, it's something they really appreciate, that these kids are getting the opportunity that a lot of parents were even unaware that they could get. All at different levels, Division I, Division II, all, all, all the same. All right? The last thing I wanted to touch on was, well, two things, athletic training. I don't know how many people know this, I think it's always good knowledge for you all, but around the state, not a lot of athletic departments have athletic trainers on site, which is a huge point of contention in, in the AD world. You can imagine, we have seven games a week at home between all of our different levels. It's my biggest level of anxiety, having a kid go down on the court, or, or whatever the case, because it's, you just never know. Thankfully, we have somebody that's always there. Other schools do not have that. So that's credit to Mosh and Jonathan, who works with us. But that, that support, that partnership has been awesome, because, again, talking with colleagues around the state, some of them don't have that medical coverage at games. And I don't, I don't, I can't even fathom it, quite honestly, is how, how you have a athletic event with no licensed trainer around. But, again, that's just part of, I think, one of the ways that Franklin's leading, is, is making sure that we're taking care of our kids. And lastly, I would like to touch on just our code of conduct and our handbook. I think when that was created, it's been awesome, like, there's, everything in there is laid out. Again, when you look at the landscape and the environment of other handbooks, I know it doesn't seem like the biggest deal, but that is the one-stop shop of expectations we have for people. When we have situations come up, whether it's an athlete, a coach, a teacher, whatever the case may be, everything is laid out in there. But that is also a place where we have to continue to update, to look at it, just because times change. And I think that's one thing that, moving into the future, I, I look forward to as well. So I say all this because our Athletic and Activities Department was already strong, obviously, before I got here. But I look forward to finding ways to continue to, to elevate it, because we have the perfect kids in the world, we have the teachers, we have the parents, we have the support, we have all the ingredients. And now it's time to, I think, take it to that next level of just breaking through and kind of opening the floodgates, giving them all the, the things that they need to, to continue to be successful. So with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions, comments?
Can I just ask about the officiating class, just from a personal inquiry standpoint? I mean, I, I love that idea, because I, I know that, you know, you have to really be prepared for kind of all kinds of situations. How do they prepare these kids for some of what they might encounter?
Yeah. So, so the curriculum was actually developed by the WIAA in conjunction with the Officials' Association. So, obviously, there's a curriculum part to it, again, that Mr. Vualu can speak to better specifically, but the idea was that if a school is big enough, it has the demand, it has the interest, can you take on this officiating class? Do you have somebody to teach it? Do you have enough of a demand for, for kids to take it? And we have had, I think we are, I think there's only 40 schools in the entire state that have it. So it really is, kids are getting licensed. I went into the class one day to let, basically give the kids a login to go on and sign up to be officials. They complete the class, they do a certification within the class, so they can, they are free to go be a softball umpire, to go be a basketball official. Some of them, I think, again, the experiences they're getting in the class, they're starting to see that people can actually make a really good career out of being an official. I don't think many people know that, it's just one of the, again, as we could talk about innovation, that is one of the ways that we are innovating within sport, is teaching kids that, like, the ball bouncing is not the only way to, you know, make some money or find a career, like, there is other ancillary things right around it. And I think the officiating class is showing kids, whether they take it just because they're bored, or they take it because they're actually interested in officiating, all of them that I talked to, they're having a, a great job with it. They love it. So, and, and we need it. Unfortunately, officials are pretty mistreated nowadays, and that's why a lot of them are, are quitting. So we, we need it.
I mean, that is innovative, that's the epitome of innovative, to me, is having that kind of class available.
Yeah.
So, kudos.
Yeah.
Angie, please.
I was just curious, rough ratio of how many of our coaches are in-school coaches and versus people who come in from off-campus?
I'd say it's, without having that right in front of me, I'd say it's close to half and half.
And is, do you have a goal to shift that one direction or another, or you just sort of like, get the best coaches we can wherever we can find them?
No, I think it's definitely a, a case-by-case basis. Obviously, coaches are, at the high school level, really good qualified coaches that know the game, but also are, are taking active roles in developing human beings. That's where it can sometimes get hard, because you get somebody who's super competitive, I'm going to win you state championships, I'm going to do this, but they don't mention, you know, mental health, they don't mention grades, they don't mention parent relationships. And a lot of the times, when you're in the school and you're part of the fabric and the everyday of a school, you just understand that a little bit better. So it's really hard, because some people can articulate that I can do both. But you really have to ask, I think, the right questions on figuring out what's important to people. To set a goal, I think, would, would kind of skew myself towards I need to hit this goal, you know what I mean? So really, I try to take it as much as I can as a case-by-case basis, and then the coaches that we've had transitioned with so far that I've been here, I really tried to look at as, what, what, what lacked in the program based on what I heard from multiple stakeholders, including parents and the kids themselves and, and the coach maybe that left, what was missing, and what do we look for in the, in the next person? So without setting a, a specific goal, I try to keep in mind who's going to build the best kids, also maybe knowing a little bit about the sport, that'd be helpful, too.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, I'm glad you mentioned coaches, because I wanted to, I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Lankur for, for really helping with the assessment of what coaches, what we want in coaches and what we, what we need going forward. And, and I'm really impressed by the coaches we have, and you can tell because of the sportsmanship of the players. And the sportsmanship, you know, it's not just sports, it's all the clubs as well, that, you know, these, these kids are going and representing Franklin and other places, and these coaches are as well. And you see that, and, and other people mention, well, Franklin, thank you, you know, you're, you're setting, you're setting a high level. So thanks, Ms. Lankur, for, for really helping with that and taking the reins with that. And, and our coaches are incredible, so thank you to all of them as well. Moxu, please.
Thank you, you know, for creating a positive environment for our, I think, kids, because sports, you know, make them, you know, give them the platform to kind of, you know, develop camaraderie as you soon, so thank you for doing that. On an average, how many students are able to get scholarships through sports, you know, because if that, I think, you know?
Yeah. I don't have that right off the top of my head. I know that 7% of, of, this was as of last year, 7% of high school participants in sports make it to the next level. So scholarships, it, it, again, it depends, because a scholarship at a Division I level looks very different than a Division II level to a Division III where they don't get scholarships. But they still might want you to come play at their school, they just may not give you money to come play, or they find money in more creative ways, we'll say. So the percentage of, of student athletes that get scholarships right now is, is pretty slim. The fact that we have 10 just in one today, we just had 10 sign on to, to play somewhere today, albeit not all of them are getting full ride scholarships. But nationwide, I can tell you, it's a very, very slim amount that are able to get college scholarships.
Thank you. Ann, please.
Yeah, I just want to echo everyone saying thanks for having this robust program, and especially, I think it's really important to acknowledge, there's the, the variety of opportunities that our kids, you talked about that, and finding a connection for every kid to have some type of connection point at school, and the variety of things that we offer, including, I'm loving this new Investment Club, are they going to be, like, supporting the athletic?
I would love that, yeah.
No, but just, I mean, the idea that if a kid has an interest, they can come and they can start something new, and if you walk in, I mean, if you can't find something, there will be something for you, you can find that.
Yeah.
I just think it's really important, because I think as we look at our, our students as, you know, whole children, and it's not just about sitting in class all day, it's having those other connection points, getting them to come to school.
Yeah.
You know, you can't go to Investment Club if you don't go to school, okay, I'll go to school. I just think it's really important, and I'm really grateful that you and your team are all supporting that, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I think it also helps us as a team, when a, when a kid is not participating in something, we are, we are constantly evaluating that group of, of why are they not doing something? Because then there, there's probably other things that we need to take a look at with them. So it is also very helpful as a, an indicator of a kid's connectedness to their, to their school.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Smith, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, now we'll tackle state convention reports. The WASB, Wisconsin Association of School Boards Convention was in Milwaukee a couple weeks ago, and most of us were down there, and the reports are written, I don't know if anybody has any, anything they'd like to mention or highlight from the reports, otherwise they're in, they're in board docs.
I just had a couple of, I wonder if we might be able to in, involve this in our future activities, that I just want to get out there for people to think about. I went to a session on writing policy, and they mentioned, the person who presented from WASB mentioned that policies often have administrative rules, but we can have board rules as well. So, for example, some of the work we did with Joanne and her colleague about this is the way we're going to do something, we might, we could actually write that in as a board rule under a policy, so that it, you know, it's a little more fluid and flexible, but it's recorded somewhere. So that's something we might consider doing. Another one I went to about student progress monitoring, just mentioned about how, if the board identifies several things that are most important to it to be monitoring, you know, you're more likely to reach those goals. So I was thinking whether, when we see the next coherence plan, if we were to pick out the two or three KPIs that are most important to, to us, maybe as a group, and sort of say we, we might want to just, at least have those mentioned in our packet a little more frequently. I feel like there was one other thing I wanted to mention. No, that's all I care, I need to mention, thanks. It was a good conference.
Thank you.
I didn't think we can read the reports. I just, I'm really grateful that we're able to go to the conference, it's great that it's local, there are some people who, I mean, they really do travel a long distance and come and spend the whole week, and it's a real commitment, not that it's not a commitment for all of us to go as well, but it's nice that it's, it's local. And you just really gain a lot from hearing about, you know, other districts and how they're doing things, and, you know, that, that connectedness, I just think it's really important. And especially for us as, you know, as board members, you know, we want our students to keep learning, I think it's important for us to keep learning as well, and so those professional development opportunities are just really important, so grateful for that.
I appreciate the work WASB has done in terms of listening to their membership and putting in more workshops that pertain to board members and some that pertain to administrators, and everybody can get something out of it, and, and that's useful. You know, I, I know the, the main, the main one I went to was a referendum workshop, which was a three-hour afternoon, but we have a lot of work to do, getting ready for, getting ready for that this year, so, so I will, I won't, I won't bore you with the three hours. But it was, it was worthwhile, and I think, I think these things are worthwhile, and, as Ann said, to learn as you go along. Anybody else?
I went to one on, on staff quitting, and it just, I think what they talked about as far as communication and decision-making, I think Mrs. Bennen is, like, hitting all of these that they talked about. So I'm, I'm hoping that that bears fruit, and, and what they said was kind of what we're already doing. So that was really encouraging.
Actually, I went to a session involving, you know, how to keep teachers engaged, you know, and keep them, and talked a lot about actually, not so much, I mean, obviously, the, the bottom line dollar amount is always the most important thing, right? But just all the other things that you can do as a district to keep teachers in your district beyond just, here's your, your dollar amount. And I think, you know, things in the last little bit of time here have gotten a lot better than that, and I'm appreciative of the work that we're doing with our Better Place to Work task force, and, you know, hitting all those, all those pieces, so it was, it was good.
I know Mrs. Bennen and Dr. Mo and, and Mr. Cromie also went, so I don't know if you have any, anything to mention specifically, or if, if you don't, that's fine as well. But thank you for going and, and appreciate the, the learning you get out of it as well. All right, we'll go on to 9D, Wisconsin General Records Retention Adoption, Ms. Lankur, please.
Sure, so this is kind of a unique agenda item that I don't anticipate we will see very often, but the Wisconsin Public Records Board changed the way that they would recommend school districts and other public entities to keep their records and the retention schedule for different items. So I'm hoping that the memo laid it out clearly, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just want to thank Laura for taking this on also, and updating us along the way, but it's not a, something that any district was really looking forward to, we kind of learned of these changes, you know, near the beginning of the school year, so everybody's kind of been trying to sort through it, and then going through a lot of work on how we store our files and where we store them, so, not the most exciting stuff, but necessary. So thank you.
All right, any, any questions? Thank you. All right, policies, policy 5122, admission of expelled students, 5363, emergency school closings, and 5316, animals in schools. These are all first reads. Mrs. Bennen, I'll, I'll turn over to you first.
Okay. Jess definitely got the more exciting policy of these three, with animals in school, but, so the two that I have, I'm actually recommending But, so the two that I have, I'm actually recommending that we retire. There's just not a need for them to be in policy. One's already written in state statute and we, we follow that, the admission of expelled students. We don't admit students that are expelled from other school districts during the terms of their expulsion. And we follow the policy, so there, I'm sorry, the statutes. There's really no reason to have policy on it. And then also policy 5363, emergency school closings. Gotten to practice it a few times in my first year and a half. Seems to be working. All the information is on the website. And it's pretty straightforward and, and visible to the community. It also doesn't really need to be in policy. And also I'm looking at other districts. This isn't typically things in policy. So if there's any questions, let me know. As we can move on to Jess's, which is much more exciting.
Anybody have any questions on those first two? Dr. Mo, please.
So you saw in front of you, we have a couple changes to animals in schools. I just wanted to point out some technical and some legal updates. So the first thing that you'll see is some newer language around service animals and what's allowable and what's not. One point of clarification I thought that you might ask about is under the ADA, they have said an animal's whose purpose is solely to be a companion or an emotional support animal isn't considered by definition a service animal under ADA. So I know that's come up in other public areas. It doesn't mean we would never allow one, but by definition, a service animal is different than a companion animal under ADA. The other sentence that we added is, in, in terms of 5316 or in terms of this policy, we would always follow IDEA or Section 504 rules. So that kind of protects us if that, if the rules there should change, we are subject, we follow federal law on both of those things and we would follow the rules as it pertains. So even that change about the clarification in companion animals came about, I think, 2010 or 2012. And so we would not have to go into this policy and change it again. If the rules of that law change, we are obligated to follow them. The other thing that you'll see is a draft of the updated admin rules. I know that the admin rules don't normally come to the board for approval, but just because the policy was due, we did go over that or I did go over that with legal. So with the changes to make sure, kind of with the Director of Human Resources handling those requests when it's a staff member and the Director of Student Services handling those requests when it's a student. So that differentiation wasn't in our original admin rules. That's one change to note. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer questions. The rest of it was largely some language stuff, but you can see all of the admin rules were crossed out and replaced. So I just wanted to tell you why.
Anybody have any questions on 5316? Nothing about Obi?
I mean, I think Obi is covered under the, as long as there's written permission, which Obi is always approved by Principal Rosinski in writing prior to his visits to the middle school, so.
You can, I, I'm glad you brought that up. There is some language that got added there, so we do have the right. So we have now a, what would be considered a therapy dog that comes to student services at the high school. So before that approval was made, we asked that individual, where were they trained for their therapy? What is their history on vaccination? So I added that more explicitly, that if somebody makes a request, we reserve the right to ask for more information about the animal. Sometimes you'll have, the Milwaukee County Zoo or Cole's Department Store has like these traveling shows, so to speak, or assemblies with animals. So we did add that the, the principal or the district person would have the right to ask for more information about those animals. You can't just.
Bring an animal.
Bring, bring it in without asking for permission. So, thank you. All seems good with, with our friend at the middle school.
Okay, good.
All right, anybody else? Great, and that's the first read. We will be voting on those next meeting on the 21st. School Board Liaison Reports. Does anybody have any board liaison reports this week? Or Community Engagement Reports? Certainly, we had the Key Communicators Meeting on Monday. Great school tours. Thank you to everybody involved. The tours were outstanding. It shows the creativity of the, of the kids and the teachers in terms of using the space that they have. And we certainly learned that we could probably have a little bit more space available, especially for athletics, but also for CG.
And I'll just keep saying it because what I heard from everybody who had never been through those parts of the high school is if and when we want to take this to the community in any way, those tours need to be available for the community because driving by, the, the outside of the school belies some of the spaces inside.
And just the general reputation of, you know, all right, Franklin High School, it's just, it's, it's awesome and amazing and it is. But until you get in and see it, you don't understand the, the needs.
So if you need volunteers to run tours?
Ask Mike.
Plus I can bus them up there.
Exactly.
There you go. Bus tour.
All right, anybody else?
Oh, I just want to remind my friends on the board. I saw your names on the schedule tomorrow for the.
Knowledge-athon.
Knowledge-athon at Southwood Glen. So I'll see, I'll see you there.
This is about my, you're running in the Knowledge-athon at Southwood Glen.
I was excited when I saw your names on the list.
Oh, good.
Yes, Knowledge-athon is tomorrow at Southwood Glen. It is one of their great fundraisers. Future agenda items, Robinwood Elementary School Presentation, Wisconsin General Records Retention Adoption, Policies 5122, 5363, and 5316.